Right, good afternoon everyone and welcome to this meeting of North and East Plans Panel. My name is councillor Javed Akhtar and I will be chairing today's meeting. Could I remind everyone that today's meeting is being livestreamed on Leeds City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the minute without needing to be present? Could I also remind members of the public present that this is a formal meeting? While we welcome your attendance, we ask that you do not approach members of the Plans Panel during the meeting and that the proceedings are observed quietly and without any interruption. If this is not adhered to you, may be asked to leave and the meeting will be suspended while this is facilitated. North and East Plans Panel deals with applications from north, east and east of the city. The aim of the panel is to hear all the relevant information from applicant, members of the public and council officers to help members of the panel to make their decision. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you have introduced yourselves? I'll ask you from my left, sorry.
Hi there, Ben Barnett, Senior Planning Officer.
David Jones, team leader for the east area.
Good afternoon, Lisa Brannan, Principal Highways Engineer.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Michael Miller, representing Kipiksumathli Ward.
Afternoon councillor Nicole Lloyd, Temple News and Ward.
Good afternoon councillor David Jenkins from Killingbeck and Seacroft Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Bromley from Horstford and Roddenwood.
Hi councillor Adel Ray from Bromley and Stanley Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Dawn Siri from Putsey Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Barry Anderson, Adel Wooddale Ward.
Good afternoon Debbie Olden, my name's the clerk to the panel.
Good afternoon Jess Leishman, Principal Legal Officer.
Good afternoon Nicole Walker, Legal Advisor to the panel.
Good afternoon, David Newbury, Lead Planning Officer for the Plans Panel.
Thank you everyone, moving to the agenda, could I ask the clerk to go through item one and five please?
Thank you, under agenda item one, there are no appeals, under agenda item two, there's no exempt information, under agenda item three, there's no late items, under agenda item four, could I ask members to declare any interests? I'll take silences there are none. Under agenda item five, apologies have been received from councillor Stevenson and councillor Anderson is attending as his substitute and we've also received apologies from councillor Bethel, thank you Chair.
Thank you Debbie, moving on to item six, minutes of the previous meeting held on the 21st of August 2025, do members accept these minutes as correct record? I'll assume correct unless indicated otherwise. Thank you, matter arising from the minutes, are there any matters arising from minutes? No, moving on to item seven, which will be presented by Ben. Over to you sir.
Thank you very much Chair. So this application relates to the provision of 84 static caravan homes in the Leeds Greenbelt. This is for an officer recommendation to defer and delegate the decision to officers to approve the application, looking for a further temporary consent of six years. We've selected a temporary on the basis that it was originally given a temporary consent in 2019, there was a subsequent three-year consent in 2012, 2015 and then again in 2019. Upon review of that, members felt that they viewed it too often and actually they could give a bigger timeframe before the next review and so six years was chosen, which brings us now to 2025 and so off the basis of that, we've suggested an additional six years and that's also what the applicant has come in and applied for. There's a need for the application to be taken to Plans Panel because it involves although I won't get into the detail just yet, it will be easier to cover once I've set out a bit more about the site, however, that development plan departure actually has relatively little weight. Because of that, there will also be an opportunity for the Secretary of State to call it in, however, they've not called in any of the previous applications and it looks quite unlikely that they would again. Last of all to note is, we've had no comments from the general public on this application. So I'll just first set out some of the site context, its sighting and a bit of information about the site. First of all, the business relates to Mackens and it's east of Garthas and west of Micklefield. As you can see, there's a decent land buffer between the site and of Garthas. I've got some really helpful photos later on in the presentation where you can see it on the ground, which I've taken from the built edge and there's a far bigger distance from the site from Micklefield eastwards as well. The expanse of the farm, you can see some of the polytunnels that run above that red dot, we will get much more zoomed in pictures soon where you can actually see the details of the site as well. There are footpaths that run along the north of the site, just north of where the red dot is in the centre and just run across the south of the site as well, which is also where the railway runs. I've used this plan just because I think it's helpful to set out the applicant's ownership boundary, you can see the blue line that follows the expanse of all of the polytunnels as well as some open land to the south and then there's a, if you can see it out, there's etched in red in the very lower centre, which is our development site. There's also farm complex buildings to the south of that and a lake to the west. And in terms of the size of this farm, it amounts to around 68 hectares of land, which is 168 acres of Spanish polytunnels. Moving to a more zoomed in image of the site, so as I said, the site is operated by Mackens and they're a fruit-producing enterprise largely comprising strawberry farming and as I've said, the business utilizes Spanish polytunnels, produce is collected during the day and they have workers operating all through the night as well on taking part in shifts. The business requires an incredibly large workforce, given the scale of the site, as I've noted, 168 acres. They've historically struggled to maintain this workforce through job agencies prior to the initial application in 2009, they were often finding that they were struggling to get, it's around 350 members of staff at peak time and they were struggling to have them accessing the site regularly, they couldn't get enough through agencies, often people weren't turning up on time and they were losing a really large amount of produce, which was resulting in viability concerns for the business. And so what they've done is they've since introduced work abroad programmes where people stay on site for months at a time, usually from Eastern Europe and they stay in these caravans located throughout the site. This is quite common in agricultural farming practice and I actually have quite a helpful quote from a paper produced by central government about this, this was in a review of the seasonal workers visa in July 2024 where they said, "The labour market for seasonal agriculture is completely separate from the market for resident workers in a way that is unlike any other labour market." According to the ONS, 99% of seasonal agricultural workers are from EU countries and it's difficult to imagine a scenario in which this workforce can come from the resident labour market. There is no other sector in which the majority of workers are migrants, if there is no such scheme, it is likely that the contraction and even closure of many businesses in parts of agriculture in the short run as they are currently dependent on this labour. As I've noted previously, the application site is located within the Leeds Greenbelt. This is where the only place has really been a significant policy change since its last assessment, as many of you will be aware, grey belt policy is now been introduced. As I shortly set, will shortly set out, we feel that the application comprises of actually appropriate development within the grey belt and it's compliant with national policy on this, however, because of our local policy being out of date with the recent changes to grey belt policy, that's where the conflict with the development plan happens. But just to note where there are inconsistencies with our development plan and national policy, we can only afford very little weight to our local policies, hence why we feel it's appropriate from a national perspective and whilst it's not from a local perspective, we can't afford very much weight to actually that conflict at all. So generally, we think it's acceptable overall. So to set out, grey belt is identified as land which does not strongly contribute to urban sprawl, the merging of two towns together or the character of historic towns. In terms of urban sprawl, you can see that there's quite a large buffer to the west of the site from Garthas and as I've noted before, I do have pictures from, taken from the footpath just from the built edge to see what that feels like on the ground. At eastwards, there's a much bigger expanse to Micklefield and so that's why we feel in terms of urban sprawl, it doesn't contribute. It also doesn't contribute to the merging of two towns together because Micklefield is a self-professed village and on top of that, it doesn't have many local services nor does it have a designated local or town centre. And we don't feel it contributes to the character of historic towns because Garthas doesn't have a historic core or a conservation area and the land itself doesn't contribute to the historic character of Garthas as far as we have identified. The next stage of the assessment states that development acceptable on grey belt land, provided that it would not undermine the green belt function and those additional functions are encroachment into the countryside, given that this is on a temporary basis, we can, and then when the need's no longer there, these will be removed. On top of that, it's also within built development and in terms of the overall wider expanse of the green belt, it's a very, very small area on the green belt. And in terms of the additional function is promoting urban regeneration on brownfield land, because the people living on site are generally coming in from abroad and from Europe and they don't have access to vehicles and cars, they couldn't really be sighted on otherwise brownfield land and there's none identified that would be appropriate because they need this convenient access on site to work. So on this basis, oh and last of all, there's a, needs to be an unmet need for the development proposed, which has been set out in Mackens case of struggling to find, struggling to find people in the past that can attend to meet that 350 workers in the summer, peak amount, not managing to make enough produce and I think the paragraph I set out from central government was really helpful as well in setting out of what that need is. And last of all, the proposed sighting would be sustainable, now I'll go into this in a bit more detail later on as well, however, because we have so many workers on site, none of them are actually needing to travel to and from the premises by car and in that we save an enormous amount of CO2 emissions and yeah, carbon contributions and in terms of the need for it in that location, that's already previously been set out. So overall, we feel it is compliant with national grey belt policy and whilst our local policy doesn't allow for this as appropriate development, it's not consistent with national policy and so there's only very limited weight to that. Moving on, so historically, this has been granted on the basis of a very special circumstances case where the development has been not inappropriate development, but there's been benefits that outweigh those to make it worthy of being approved. In this instance, now that it's actually compliant with grey belt policy, these all come out as general benefits to the scheme and so I'll run through these benefits. In the first instance, you have the economic benefits for the existing Leeds-based farming business, which is Mackens, it allows them to continue operating on site and promotes the continued use of the land for agricultural purposes, which is a positive use within the green belt and desirable. It supports local Leeds business stores with fresh produce and benefits to stores themselves, who are primarily comprising of Morrisons, Aldi and an on-site strawberry selling store called Annabelle's. And the general public also get the benefits of having access to locally sourced fresh produce. The existing landscaping scheme, there's an existing landscaping scheme on site that's tied to these temporary consents and that will continue to be maintained as long as we control this by planning consent. With those come biodiversity net gain benefits as well as the visual benefits of the landscaping scheme, which also quite effectively screens the development. What's quite helpful about the plan I currently have on screen is you can see that landscape treatment that surrounds the site and that surrounds the edges of the caravans. And moving on, as I'll move on shortly, I have some really helpful pictures of the landscaping scheme further into the slides. Another additional benefit is that by having a planning consent active, we can fully control the operations on site. Historically, the applicant has utilised permitted development rights and they were doing this prior to 2009, where they had sighted the caravans actually right on the built edge of Garthas and we had quite a large number of objections at the time from neighbours who were concerned about the noises they were experiencing from this informal, yet lawful workers living on site and in shifting it away, whilst there was an enormous amount of objections that were initially coming in, we've actually got none on this current application, which is demonstrable of a benefit that we've had by controlling this through permitted development, not permitted, by controlling it through planning consent. As I've noted before, there's a large reduction in carbon emissions because 350 staff are no longer travelling to and from the site. And last of all, by having a temporary nature of this scheme, it means that once there's no longer a need for it, the site can be restored into a former open condition within the green belt whenever it's no longer required. This is hopefully a helpful zoomed in aerial of the site, so you can get a bit more of a feel for the landscaping scheme that's in place. I think it's also the best slide for me to cover other relevant matters that will continue to be dealt with as previously approved. So from an amenity perspective, you can see it's quite a large farm building within the site with a few cars parked out front and some hard standing. Just if I cover this with my mouse here, don't know if you can actually see that. So this is the immunity building and they have access to it and it provides administrative support for the people living there, recreational facilities and convenience goods. We also have a complaints process in place for the general public to make use of if they're feeling there's any excessive noise or anything like that coming from the development. Because it's been situated so far away from a lot of, from the neighbouring town and village, we actually haven't had a complaint since 2019 and that was, the nature of that was due to noise coming from the immunity building, but because of the complaints process in place, that was quickly sent to environmental health, who worked at Mackens, to resolve that and there's not been any noise nuisances or problems since. And as the, there's a minibus service also in place on the site that allows the people living on site to access local shops and services should they need to and that's run and organised by Mackens. I have here a floor plan layout of the caravans, they show that you have three bedrooms, a bathroom, a kitchen and a living space, which is everything someone generally needs to live in them, especially on a temporary basis and they're not permanent. And then there's also an image there that hopefully sets out an idea of what the caravans look like. This is where I found a gap in the landscaping from the footpath, generally it's very well landscaped all around, however, to get a decent photograph of it where you can get an idea of the caravans, I've picked where that space is and that's well away from Garthas where that gap is, it's quite far to the, it's taken from the north-east side of the site. Last of all, I've just got some helpful photographs that I think give an idea of what the landscaping looks like in place and these were taken only last week, so this is where, this is November conditions of the trees and the landscaping that's in place and I've set up some arrows where you can see exactly the locations of where this is taken from. So this is just to the north of the site. I have another one immediately from the north-west of the site. And last of all, I have the one I referred to earlier from the built edge of Garthas where I've tried to point out the little, the little caravans in the distance, but you might struggle to see them. And whilst that's somewhat unhelpful, that was largely the point of, they're not too much of an eyesore at all when you look from Garthas and when you look from that built edge. So just to summarise the end of the presentation, we feel that there's only very limited weight that falls against the application from the inconsistency with our development plan policy, but there's significant weight in favour of it from all the benefits that arise and on top of that, it's compliant with national grey belt policy. And there's been no objections from the general public received, which is why we're suggesting to approve the application. Thank you, that's the end of my presentation, if there are any questions.
Thank you Ben, on this occasion, we have no speakers on this item, therefore, do members have any questions for officers? Councillor Anderson?
One, shall we quick, the other one might not be so quick. There is no mentioning here of the views of local ward members, are they broadly supportive? They might not be 100% supportive, but are they broadly supportive of it? And then I'll ask my second one if you don't mind after that.
We've had, not had any comments or objections or anything like that and we've had no emails from them, so nothing that suggests they have any strong feelings.
Right, so in respect to the grey belt, green belt debate, which we had at the last meeting, I was out here as well, that's the same issue we'd been discussed and also bearing in mind the emerging views coming from officers about green belt, grey belt. So what we're saying is that if we were to turn this down today, the chances are we would lose it and based on the training we got the other day from, I don't know whether it's a QC, but he was certainly making it very clear that when it comes to payment of compensation, that if we are being belligerent, there's more likely we get awarded against us, so in effect, what you're saying is that we need to approve this because whether we like it or not, in terms of the redefinition, that's the emerging way it's going nationally and in terms of any potential. To us, we would be more liable to it than normal if we were to turn this round.
Yeah, in terms of, I think we would really struggle from an appeal perspective to refuse this, it's from our assessment clearly compliant with grey belt policy, does that help?
Any other question, councillor Bromley and then councillor Jenkin.
I just wanted to, there's a lot of discussion around planting and foliage on the outskirts of it and sort of, like more from the perspective of other residents and I just wondered what could there be that's actually making it more pleasant for those that are there working on site, so looking at the foliage and the planting within the site opposed to just as trying to obscure the fact that it's there. And also, I appreciate that it's only temporary, but three bedrooms per caravant, that actually seems quite cramped and they also seem quite, I would wonder how old those caravans are as well, because we don't actually see an inside scan of what it looks like inside. But in terms of generally, I can see that this is obviously a difficult industry that needs support post-Brexit, so what is it that we can actually do to make sure that workers are available and, and being on site does make more sense than going back and forth environmentally like you've mentioned, but also making sure that that's done in a kind way. Yes, so has any more planting being discussed and making it more of a wellbeing site opposed to just a, this is a bed for the night?
So from a landscaping point of view, it might be easier if I nipped to a slide that, that shows the aerial, there's not a huge amount of space, as you can see, most of it's occupied by the caravans themselves and where you see that quite large gap in the centre, that's actually where the septic tank is buried underground and I think that's why historically there's been no caravans put there and why they might struggle to put some landscaping in place. On top of that, in terms of, as a place when I visited and the feel I got from the footpath, from looking surroundings wise, you are surrounded by countryside and open greenbelt land and there's an enormous lake immediately to the west of it and there's also quite a lot of farm animals with, of horses and sheep that just abut the site to the west. So I didn't get a feel landscape wise that it was an unpleasant experience to look around in and I, I thought that was actually quite pleasant, especially considering compared to some of the university flats and things I've stayed in. It's something I could explore for further landscaping if you think it's really important and I'd be happy to, but I didn't feel that way, sorry, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you and that's really helpful to hear about what it felt like actually being on site. In terms of the lake and it's sort of access to these things as well though, isn't it? So the lake might be there, but is it actually completely accessible for them to walk around? If they're relying on a bus, like how frequent is that? And just if there are, if there are things that we could ask could be on site, so it's actually their place, their area while they're there, I'd be interested to know.
Yeah, and sorry, am I able to move on to the second question, is that okay? Yeah, and so the second question regarding the immunity quality of the caravans themselves, I think we are looking at it on the basis that they are temporary, up to a six-month basis, which I understand can be quite long. However, they have everything provided on site in terms of what they need in terms of immunity quality in the building and they do have access to the wider farm and things like that to roam around on. The also, the model is mainly aimed at university students from abroad that, to come over and kind of see the UK while they're at it. So the types of, the types of people that are coming over from Eastern Europe are predominantly students and it's marketed at universities, so not to say that there's less demand for immunity quality for those students, but they tend to be of a kind of a younger age and hopefully that's maybe, I think that's probably better in terms of the close quarters and friendliness, almost like a house share with that, if that's helpful.
Councillor Jenkin's?
Yeah, so living conditions are obviously a critical issue. There's no mention about it being another six years in the recommendations, is there? Does it say? Another six years, okay, that's fine then.
Councillor Siri?
Thank you Chair, councillor Bromley has already touched on my question, I just wanted to go a little bit further, are the caravans inspected regarding age condition? In the, in the business world, if you have a static caravan on a site, you're required to update it every so often, I'm not sure how long, and it just seems that we keep renewing this every six years, but are the caravans being changed at all or is it just, are they decades old?
Would you like to add on that, you might have a better knowledge, just pass over to David.
Hi, yeah, I think with this particular type of accommodation, there's not necessarily any licensing requirements, there are fire safety and that's why they're all positioned, I think it's either five or six metres away, so they have to comply with those types of regulations, but it's, it's not sort of licensed in the same way that HMOs are for example. I mean ultimately, yeah, they do have a shelf life, these, these caravans and I'm sure the applicant will probably renew them as and when is appropriate. It certainly doesn't buy them when they're, they're new, so they were all bought second hand, but you know, having, having visited the site over the years, you know, they're, they're in reasonable shape and they've got all the services you would need, plus they've got access to this immunity block that was seen as a way of giving the sort of workers a bit more sort of social space to interact etc. So I think, I think it's, it's kind of the best we can achieve really within the regime we're working in, if that helps.
Thank you, I've got another question if I may Chair. By continually renewing this application, so it seems more, it seems more of a permanent temporary thing that's going on, are we opening up to possible permanent development on this site by it becoming an established place to live, isn't it?
No, it's a great question, it was one that we thought about a lot actually at the time when we were considering the application. I think as long as there's a temporary consent granted, we don't have to worry so much about fallback positions that they can start building homes and things instead because we have full control and they, they need to remove it when it's gone or they need another temporary consent. So I'm not, we're not particularly worried about them being able to use this to leverage permissions in the future which are permanent, does that, is that helpful?
Would we be able to put a clause into this application that once it's, it's over as a temporary residence, that it goes back to, I don't know if anybody knows how it was originally, but that the land is returned to its original state?
Yeah, so this, this came up as a previous planning committee because it's had a number at this stage and it's already hopefully integrated, well, it's integrated into the planning condition.
Thank you councillor Ray and then councillor Miller.
Thank you, going back to the amenity, the one thing that worries me about these being as they are, there is no shade for them and with the increasingly hot summers, they must be really uncomfortable to live in, I know where I worked on the day job, we have a polytunnel and it is unbearable and the caravan type building, it just gets incredibly hot, are we, are we, are we happy that people are safe there actually and not at risk of heat exhaustion, overheating or anything like that?
Yeah, I did, I noticed when I was visiting on site, some of them had put up things like awnings to the front, almost like you'd have in front of a tent when you go camping and they were using those on breaks and spare time. Of course, you have access to the immunity building as well that provides shade and space outside of the sun and, and in terms of working, working on the site, I would have thought they probably need to be within the polytunnels when they're working. They, they could always presumably access back to their caravans or any types of shade that they've put up and that Mackens are allowing to support, supporting them doing that. And we could possibly review, review that with the agent as well to find out if there's any spaces that they, they're using on site for this.
I'm thinking more of sleeping in those caravans, I would imagine they're incredibly hot, is there any way we could put some tree cover within them and get a bit of shade or anything, because it's, it's a very exposed site, isn't it?
Yes, thank you Chair, in terms of your last point councillor Ray, it's something we could potentially explore, but I'm not sure if we could actually come up with a solution to that. but I'm, I'm not sure if we could actually come up with a solution to that in light of the spacing between the, between the caravans themselves. On the broader point about immunity that a, a number of members have raised, we could potentially place a condition on the planning permission about the level of immunity of the caravans to be provided. Obviously, there's been a standard which has been set that we've accepted in the past through the numerous planning permissions that we've granted, so it'd be difficult for us to deviate beyond that. But I understand the point that's been made, and we could have a, a condition which requires details to be submitted. It might cover things like insulation, room sizes, those sorts of things. We'd have to give some thought to the finer details, but it might add a, an extra layer of protection, as it, as it were. We have just very recently, in fact, this morning, received an appeal decision which concerned caravans which were of a lesser standard than these, which we'd actually refused planning permission for on the level, on the basis of the level of immunity that they provided as a, a permanent dwelling. And the inspector supported us on that. So it's obviously, it's something that we can have regard to, and it, and we could come up with a form of words to attach to a condition which seeks to protect or provide a reasonable level of immunity for the occupiers.
You okay with that, Constable Ray? Constable Miller?
There was reference to these caravans being here prior to two thousand and nine, two thousand and nine through permitted development rights. Do we know why the applicant went from doing that to actually submitting a planning application?
I, I understand that through submitting an application, they were able to get more caravans and a larger workforce, which is what they needed for the site, which whilst there are larger, a larger number of workers, it was beneficial in general, because they're being located away from the edge of Garthas and causing less problems for the, the local residents.
Right, I can't see anyone else for any question.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Do we, so there's reference to a minibus service for seasonal workers to be provided by the applicant. And obviously, we've touched on the fact that they won't be driving on and off-site and have cars and stuff. Do we know what impact the minibus service or the workers being there in general have on traffic use in and around the site? So I believe access to the site will be from Ridge Road, and that road in the next year is going to go through a significant development with trans-penam route upgrades shutting it off in half. And residents in Micklefield are concerned about diversions and stuff like that. So I was just wondering if we had any assessment on what impact it might have on local traffic?
David's suggesting we're, we're not too sure, we don't think, we don't think it will have a harmful impact because of such a small amount of traffic that makes its way to the site. It's anything associated with the existing farm that we're not considering, or it's just the minibus in it, any small numbers of staff with that. I don't think there's a concern because the traffic movements are so small. If that's helpful.
Right, thank you. Any comments? In that case, can I ask David to sum up, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Obviously, the, the items received quite full consideration, number of matters that have been raised by members, but I don't get the feeling that there's an objection in principle to a further grant of planning permission. Members need to consider when putting forward a recommendation whether it should be subject to that additional condition about the level of immunity being provided for the occupants of the caravans themselves. So it's just really forced for someone to, to move the recommendation or amended recommendation, Chair.
Can we take the vote? And could I ask proposal, and if there, if there is any amendment, if you can propose it in that, in that, in that sense? With, with the recommendation which has just been highlighted, yeah? Thank you. Okay, all in favour? Ask.
Sorry, did that, with that condition, did we add in air conditioning?
I think it would be very difficult for us to add in air conditioning to that, because we'd be adding an extra layer on, above what we've thought was acceptable previously. We'll have to give some thought to it, but I imagine the sort of thing that's going to cover, it could potentially cover ventilation, room sizes, standard of insulation, those sort of matters.
Constable Miller?
Sorry, could I just have clarity on what condition we're changing?
Yes, this wouldn't be changing a condition, it would be adding a new one on, which would be something along the lines of details of, details of just listed to be submitted and approved, and for the caravans to be occupied in accordance with those details. Well, the sort of things I was thinking about, we'd have to have a discussion with the applicant about it, to see what's actually achievable and what's reasonable. But the sort of things that we're talking about are room sizes, level of insulation, ventilation, those sort of matters.
Right, let's try again. Can we have someone who can move it? Was it Constable Lloyd to, and to Constable Ray to second? Yeah, all in favour? Anyone against? Any abstentions? So thus carried? Yeah, please.
Thank you, Chair. So members have resolved to defer and delegate approval of the application. This is subject to a referral to the Secretary of State, as it constitutes a departure from the statutory development plan. That's subject to the conditions set out in the report and an additional condition about the level of immunity to provide by the caravans for the occupants. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of the meeting. Date and the time for the next meeting will be Thursday, eleventh of December at one thirty PM, and that can conclude today's meeting, and have a wonderful afternoon. And I will take my dog after work.